Some of the dimensions of the interior space to provide the 10-foot setback rather than the required 15-foot setback. And then finally, I think the overall recommendation to reduce the maximum height of the building to 30 feet. This is consistent with some of the smaller lots in Old White Bear, which during a zoning study back 12, 14 years ago, maximum height of homes in our one and art, or excuse me, our three and our four districts in Old White Bear have a maximum building height of 30 feet. Based on the side yard setback variances that are being granted, the planning commission wanted to see the overall height of the building mass reduced. I'm sorry, I'm just kind of, no, I wish I didn't have all the slides, but it'd be pretty confusing without all of them. And I'm happy to go back to each of them. And then here on the garage, which is the 29-foot variance from a 35-foot front yard setback for the garage with living space above it, staff's recommendation, which the planning commission concurred with, was to modify the design of the roof over the garage so that it wasn't quite as tall right along just six feet from the edge of the public right-of-way in front of the home. And if you can see in this graphic depicting kind of introduce a hip roof design so that it's not quite as tall right there at the street front edge itself, which I believe the applicant has indicated an ability to work with that to some extent. And then the fourth variance is simply the rear yard variance with that deck extending three feet into the required setback based on the lakeside, which the planning commission and staff were both supportive of that. Therefore, the planning commission recommended denial of the south side yard setback down to four and a half feet, and recommended approval of the four variances to a lesser degree as presented this evening. And that's why I'm very glad to have at least walked through the graphics. And I'm happy to try to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Kane?
Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the current house, you had the overlay of both houses up there. The current house would be out of compliance or would have needed variances or would, if you wanted to rebuild the current house, you would need the similar variances, maybe not quite as many.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, that's correct. I think the distinction is that it is a single-story home.
Yeah, but the two.
Yep, but the side yard setbacks do not meet the 15-foot side yards.
Okay. I forgot my second question. Well, the other question would be just, did we sort of get to yes, then? I mean, do we sort of have, it looks like the planning commission did a lot of work on this with some of the changes. Maybe the applicant can speak, but I mean, did we get to yes?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, I think that the applicant was looking for direction of what would be acceptable. And so if the city council agrees with the planning commission just to tighten it up a little bit, I feel like it's just two belt loops that they're asking to cinch the belts a little bit after COVID. And just tighten it up a little bit, maybe not go to the extent to which was initially requested, but to redesign the home, which does not go without cost, right?
Lose a little bit of square footage, finish square footage, probably.
Lose a little interior square footage, reduce the bulk of the, you know, the roof line. But I think that upon confirmation from the council, then the applicant will be more willing to work with the home designer and drafts person to revise plans to demonstrate how they can meet with the planning commission and city council's desire just to reduce the extent of the variances slightly.
I mean, this is Cottage Park, and we're used to this, although I kind of appreciate the planning commission's work to, you know, just try to get it, we know it's going to be out of variance, and we're going to need variances in this neighborhood, probably forever.
Yep, yeah.
One property at a time. We're going to go through the whole neighborhood. But so I'm inclined to support the recommendation.
Well, the applicant is here. If you care to say something, please, now would be your opportunity to come forward and name an address and.
Good evening. My name's Paula Lubinski, and my address right now is 1407 Mount Trail in Centerville. And I have to shout because I'm British and apparently at the last planning committee, nobody could hear me. Somebody be very American and shout. My husband would be very proud. Maybe he'll hear me in San Diego, because that's where he is today. So, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. The roof height, the pitch of the roof wasn't really finalized before we submitted the plans for the planning committees, meetings, and deadlines. So, we already agreed to lower the roof pitch. We just didn't get the new drawings done yet so that we can afford to build the house when we get ready to do it, instead of redoing the plans. But so we are planning on lowering that. I think from what I just saw, and I should have refreshed my memory earlier, but the other home down the street that was approved, I think will even be either at the same or a little bit lower than they ended up being. On the front side, 35 is the mean or the height there. Yep. So, that I think is, we're in good shape. The only thing that I wanted to ask for or ask for consideration on, I guess, is that the front of our house, I don't know if you have the front elevation of our proposed house, but the width, I feel like we're like Pat and Vanna at the game show.
Oh, it is. Okay, good. Sorry.
Is 20 on the front is, we have a 22-foot garage, and then there's 22 feet of front elevation of the home for the back. And if we actually reduce that corner where the little people are hanging out by the six foot that was recommended, then we only have 16-foot of house showing and 22 feet of garage. And I'm worried that it's going to kind of throw off. I'm a realtor. I'm in real estate. And when I look at the curb appeal and the front of the home and the style of the home, I'm totally on board with the lowering and the hip roof and all the fitting in in Cottage Park, for sure. But that corner, I'm a little worried that if we pull it in, it's not just a, hey, we want as much space as we can find inside. It's more of a curb appeal thing. So, I did talk with my husband a little bit about solutions for that. And I think we can certainly pull back behind it to meet the setback from a certain point back. But maybe if we could have something that kind of evens us out and we're not, I hate to spend that much money on a house and be just looking like a garage from the street. But it's more of a, what I would want my house to look like and maintaining some of the value, I suppose, than anything else. So, and I think that is it. Everything else that they suggested were, we feel like is easy to work with. So, we're just excited to.
Counsel, any, one of you have a question for the applicant at all? Nope, I guess you're sprung. Thank you for being here. Okay. Counsel, I'll bring it back to us unless there's someone else that wishes to speak, and I don't think there is anyone in the audience. So, I will close the public hearing piece and bring it back to the council. Thoughts? Councilwoman Walsh, I know this is your ward, and since you already said, you know, you were.
Right, right. I'm just trying to think about what I just heard. But I think my desire would be to stick with the work that the planning commission did on the variance work they did. So, I'll move approval of the recommendation of the resolution that's in front of us.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Councilmember Edberg.
Madam Mayor. So, I too am trying to process the request that was being made for, I don't think it's unreasonable in its sense, but I'm not clear if there's another alternative. I also want to be deferential, well, at least fully appreciative of the work that the planning commission did. And the request is coming at me relatively cold, so I'm trying to imagine what that opportunity would be.
Sure.
I just want to, I just want to see if you can go to the current of the existing home versus the proposed. And I know, obviously, I'm respectful of the fact that once you tear a house down, you don't, it doesn't matter what was there before. You have to play by the new rules. But the corner that we're talking about is behind the neighbor to the south side, behind their garage. It's currently four and a half feet. So, it would be the space that's there is four and a half feet. So, it would be a little bigger than that. We would have less home, more side setback if we kind of split the difference, let's say, and instead of six feet smaller, we went three foot smaller. That also is a double lot, if I'm explaining that right, that the neighbor has to the south. So, his property is on the other side. We were trying to keep our home closer to the south side because the home to the north side is a lot closer. So, we didn't want to feel like we were, they're both two-story homes either side. So, we're not, you know, getting too obnoxious with being different. But I did just want to point out that the home already does encroach further than what we would be asking for. And it is sort of tucked away behind the neighbor's garage in a kind of area that we're, we decided to use one area to go to the lake and keep the other side just yard. We're trying to limit the amount of concrete and paved surfaces and stuff as well. So, I just wanted to point out the other property, that's all. So, thanks.
All right. Counsel, any thoughts?
I'm still, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on this one.
Okay, well, you.
Well, Madam Mayor, yeah.
The motion, you know.
So, split the difference, Ms. Kane, what does that, what does that look like? I mean, is that, I got lost track of the numbers, so.
So, my thought, Madam Mayor and Council, would be, you know, I'd want to work with the applicant and the design team. Perhaps the garage could be squeezed a little bit, and the front of the home could be squeezed, you know. Can two feet, I can't see the dimension on the existing two-car or four-car garage. I mean, it's not small. So, you may not need all that side location for entry and of storage of stuff because they've got two more parking spaces on the other side of the, you know, in the backside of the garage. So, perhaps we can tighten up both. Because I don't disagree with Ms. Lubinski's point that if desired, it's desirable not to have like a front-loaded garage, more home, so that the residence is the primary element that is seen by the streets. So, I think that's a valid point. But I think, you know.
Language, what, can we empower you? I could amend the resolution.
Yes, they have to work with the applicant.
I don't even know if it needs an amendment to the resolution. I think I would work within what the planning commission recommended. And then we would work with the applicant and the designer.
So, you feel like if we do the resolution as worded, you're able to?
I kind of looked at her and said, I think I've got a solution, because I think you just tightened that up by two feet.
So, you stay, I have my second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Bean, yes, no, you're, so otherwise, okay, then we will go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmembers.
Councilmembers.
Walsh.
Aye.
Bean.
Bean.
Aye.
Yang Strand.
Yang Strand.
Edberg.
Motion passes. So, go build that house, please. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here. You have a good evening also. And so then we will move on to ordinances. 8A, first reading of a city-initiated text amendment to zoning code section 1303.160 to allow interim use permits in the B5 zoning district.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I don't even think I need the PowerPoint for this one. As you will recall, there was a variance that came. the PowerPoint for this one. As you will recall, there was a variance that came forward for the property at 4701 Banning Avenue recently, where the new owners of that building had occupied or re-tenanted a former Pilates space with a Realtor, vertical Realtor, who had moved in. And without knowing the 30% limitation on retail within the ground floor area of our downtown businesses, as well as the lineal frontage of any business or building in the downtown, just to contribute to the foot traffic and support the retail component of our downtown. Planning Commission had recommended denial of the request. The city council seemed receptive to it. However, the city attorney was carefully guided us that we could not create an interim permit use, or excuse me, interim use permit until we amended the code. Therefore, staff, we prepared that text amendment and published for that, held a public hearing before the planning commission last month. Just the new building owner of the 4701 Banning showed up indicating support for the proposed text amendment, appreciation for the city's accommodation, and acknowledgement that it will not lead to future and subsequent requests for extensions, which was the principal concern of the planning commission, saying, you know, how do we know this won't be abused? And so tonight is simply the first reading. We'll publish again for the next meeting in August. And if the council wants any more analysis, you know, it's hard to anticipate where this will happen. But I think the text amendment is so specifically crafted to only allow relief from the retail requirement in the downtown in unique circumstances on a very time-specific basis. And if we can communicate to both landlords and tenants that, you know, it's a one-and-done. It's not a, you know, and so the, following the second reading of the text amendment at next month's meeting, then the council will be asked to consider the specific interim use permit for this particular use. And it very clearly has, I believe, either June 1st or January, June 1st or June 30th of 2023 as its deadline. And I don't know if we can work with the city attorney to strengthen that so that the concern that it continues and is eked out another two months. But she clearly let the commission know that she appreciated it and that their lease with the tenant is very short-term in its basis.
Thank you. Okay, so unless you have something, so between now and August 10th, is there something? Oh, Councilmember Edberg, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in the correspondence, Mr. Graham Bush asked, you know, what's the intent of the council? I want to be clear that I want us to maintain retail space in our downtown, that this is an accommodation to a specific situation that occurred. I'm interested in retaining businesses in a pandemic. I'm not interested in endangering two businesses. So I am open to making a temporary accommodation to allow this inadvertent issue to get resolved. I do think there was an absence of due diligence. That process broke down somewhere on the part of the property owner. I don't see anything in the text that puts limits on how long that accommodation can be extended. And I'm particularly interested in that because at the end of our public conversation, it was held via Zoom, there was a comment by, and I think it was the property owner, that said, great, thank you for the accommodation. We'll look forward to being able to talk with you about an extension, that you'll be so happy that you'll be open to an extension. And I just want to be real clear, now I'm just only one of five, but it's like, I'm not interested in an extension. This is a one-time accommodation. So my question to the council and staff is, what teeth do we have in the language that puts time limitations on how long such accommodations can be made? Anyway.
Okay, well, that's, Mr. Gilchrist, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So the nature of interim use permit is, by statute, has to identify the event or time at which it ends. That's written into the statute. So and it's reflected in paragraph A of your language, the interim use permit must identify the specific date or event that can be identified with certainty, again, that's language from the statute, on which the interim use permit will terminate.
So it's there.
So as part of that process, you will specifically say, this permit ends on, you know, often we write these to say, as of, if the property transfers, that's a terminating event.
Right.
But in no case later than X, a specific date. So then it ends. Now, could they come back and say, I want to apply for another one. Please give me another year? Sure, they could. But then you would have to say, no, our policy, this is a temporary thing. We gave you that opportunity. We're going to deny your request.
So where I want to go with that or ask about that is to say, what's to prevent a future council from providing an interim period of 20 years?
Nothing.
And I don't, it's not my intent, and I'm not interested in changing our codes to allow this practice for extended periods of time. And I don't even want to, I'm willing to budge. But I'm not, so two years? So my inclination would be to say something like two or three years or a period of time not to exceed X. And that would be my encouragement for us to think about. Because I'm not interested in a future council having, you know, a 100-year timeframe.
They could write us a totally new one.
Well, they could. And then they should make themselves do that.
I mean, that's, but that's what they'll have to do if they want to do a 20-year.
No, because I think if that council grants a permit for 20 years, you know, or whenever...
I see what you're saying. Okay.
They can have their 20 years. And that's an abuse of an interim concept, in my opinion. So if we're going to open this door, open Pandora's box. I want to put a gate on it.
Maybe we don't open the box.
We could, it's possible. We could choose not to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counsel, certainly, I was going to have two responses. One, of course, the future council can make this part of the regular code and just allow it or change the 30% of that. But I get your point in that it's, that's not a legislative process, that under this current writing, they could grant an extended interim use permit. So if the council is inclined, I mean, you certainly could add language to A to say, we'll terminate, but in no case more than, in no case shall an interim use permit be granted that extends more than 24 months or, you know, whatever, 36 months or two years or however you'd like to state that. So we certainly could add that in there.
Would you like to see that?
I would welcome that. I'd welcome staff and our attorney to come back with a recommendation if there's some norms, some other practices, whatever. That would, no. The three other council members, if you aren't in agreement with this, then by all means, I'm out of order.
Engstrand is.
No, I think it's very well said, and I agree with just about everything you said and the way you said it.
Councilmember Bean, you with us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would agree.
Can't hear you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do agree that...
Okay, thank you. No, I'm getting like Peter.
The other thing is, we could also, you know, when this is over, I guess, when we've granted this one permit that we expect to grant or we're going to talk about, we shouldn't prejudge it. But we could just eliminate the ordinance. We can change the ordinance back, right? We could just do another text change and take it out. We could leave it the way we got it. We can leave it the way we found it when we're done.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, I'll remind you, I mean, you know, your city is working through a code update. So this chapter will come back before you in the future.
So we could, yeah.
All right. So if you're agreeable, then I think, Ms. Kane, you've got the wording they're looking for. Great, thank you. All right, we will see this back here on the 10th of August for a vote. So moving on to 9A, resolution accepting quotes and awarding contract for the Memorial Beach retaining wall project. Mr. Copy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So each year, staff works with the Parks Mission to review different projects throughout town for our city parks. This year for 2021, we have a retaining wall that we propose to construct at Memorial Beach. You can see from this first slide here, we have kind of an existing retaining wall, Boulder retaining wall there. If you look past it, you can see kind of a steep slope. When people, I'll have Ann go to the next slide there. People tend to cut from the park area down to the beach down that steep slope. So we have a lot of people, you know, trying to pull strollers, slip and slide. And also, it's steep enough where it's pretty dangerous for our park staff to mow. So what we propose to do is actually extend that existing retaining wall in red. And you can see the proposed three-tiered retaining wall in green on that slide. What that would do is essentially provide a safe set of steps for people to walk down from West Park down to the beach. So that center area that you can see is a stairwell with handrail. So it's safer for people to go down. It's still maintain that end around for people to continue down the trail who have wagons and strollers and things like that. The other thing that'll do is, in between each of those tiers of the wall, we will put plantings, you know, grasses, flowers, things like that, along with mulch. So eliminate that area from having to be mowed. We have seasonal staff out there with push mowers and things like that, which is pretty dangerous. So we would eliminate that. We'd also be able to maximize kind of a flat area up near the upper trail. So a lot of people put a lawn chair or, you know, stop and hang out up on top there. So it maximized that flat area up on top. So it does a lot of things for the area, makes things much safer for both our park staff as well as those patrons of the beach that are coming from West Park or coming from their cars that they park in the area. So with that being said, this will take, we have two different contractors that we are proposing to do work there. One is the retaining wall contractor, and the second one is for some concrete work and the handrail. So the concrete will be kind of a edging along the stairs that will be anchored in the hillside that will also support the, kind of the pipe handrail. So with that being said, staff would recommend council adopt the resolution that would award a contract of dreamscapes in the amount of $94,361.38 for the retaining wall work and a contract of Laliere concrete in the amount of $23,710 for the concrete work and stair handrails. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Copy?
I'll move approval of the resolution.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers.
Engstrand.
Engstrand.
Edberg.
Walsh.
Bean.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to 9B, resolution setting at 25 mile speed limit on certain residential streets. Mr. Copy, this one's yours too.
It is. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this is a, I know a question that council's kind of asked a number of times. In 2019, cities were granted some additional leeway in changing speed limits within our cities. One of those speed limits is 25 miles an hour for residential roadways, and you can go lower with some additional engineering studies. So what really is driving this initial look at this, I know we were kind of waiting for, you know, to see what happened with the Minneapolis and St. Paul speed limit changes and how they were working out. But the, kind of at the last minute, our automated vehicle pilot study found out from the NASH, I'm going to mess this up, that NHTSA, close enough, the National Highway or...
Traffic Safety.
Traffic Safety.
National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, HNTSA. How's that?
There you go, NHTSA. So they came back with a final recommendation that the posted speed limit could be no greater than 10 miles an hour over the speed limit of the AV shuttle, which is 15 miles an hour. So that gives us a 25 mile an hour maximum posted speed limit. Now, had this been requested of us pre-2019, we wouldn't have had statutory authority to change the speed limit. So what staff did was, we got AECOM, who is also doing the work on the AV shuttle pilot project. We got them to do a speed study with some additional work from city staff. So city staff pulled a number of data here. I'm going to try to, I'll go through. So if you look up on the screen right now, we have the AV shuttle route is basically from County Road E. It's Linden for a short period. It turns into Willow Avenue and then goes down Orchard over to the YMCA or McKnight Road is kind of the next termini. So there's a number of stops that the shuttle will go by. It'll start at Phoenix Alternatives, go by the Boulders, Willow Apartments, the elementary school, ultimately ending up at the YMCA. So a lot of, I'll call it high-profile buildings features that are along that route. So basically, what is required of us is to do an engineering study to go to that 25 mile an hour speed limit for, these roadways are all collector roadway. So it's not the residential roadways that the statute says you can just go to 25 miles an hour. So we elected to go on the safe route and do a speed study and look at what we have out there, what we have that would support that activity. So on the, it's not working. So I'm just going to go ahead. I'll talk you through it. But so basically, we looked at a number of items, the speed of the roadway, we looked at the volumes of traffic on the roadways, we looked at crash data. So we looked at all these things, as well as those different elements that are along the roadways. There's also, if you've driven that segment roadway, there's a couple of kind of speed zones as it is. There's a 20 mile an hour speed zone for the school, so a school speed zone. And there's also an advisory 15 mile an hour speed limit for that corner where it turns from Willow to Orchard. So there's already a lot of nuances along that roadway. So once we did the speed study, we actually found that the data was pretty high overall. So it is all posted 30 miles an hour. Most of the 85th percentile speeds were, you know, mid 30s. There's one segment that was up to 46 miles an hour. So after really looking at it, this really looks like actually a great test case above and beyond just having it for the AV shuttle project. So if you look at our final recommendation that staff is making is that we would do this as more of a pilot project, not only for the AV shuttle project, but also just as, you know, what is reducing the posted speed limit? What effect does it have? So staff had purchased, engineering staff now has ability to do speed count. So we put, if you look at the streets, we do put the black tubes across the road to count the number of cars that cross them. We have new counters that we put out that has two tubes. So if you see two tubes in the same location, it counts speeds as well. So throughout the posting of this roadway to 25 miles an hour, we'll be able to put those out periodically to see how that posted speed limit change actually works. So it's kind of a neat new technology that we have here that we'll be able to check that. So really, with that said, staff would recommend that council adopt the attached resolution that would lower the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, as well as direct staff to post as such for Linden Avenue, Willow Avenue, and Orchard Avenue to, as detailed in the resolution. I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Copy? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have no issues supporting the changes that you're recommending. My request or inquiry, I have had active conversation from residents on Orchard but east of McKnight. And complaining about substantial numbers of mostly young drivers that were not too, too far from the high school. I don't want to say that's only them, but they have concerns about the speed on Bel Air east, excuse me, on Orchard east of McKnight and up toward Bel Air. And so my inquiry would be, is there a possibility on a trial basis of extending that slower speed up to Bel Air? And if so, what kind of engagement with the community would we need or what kind of other conversation might be required?
Well, you could do that without anything, right?
I'm not sure about the, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, the question I guess I would have, certainly the council could do that. I don't... I don't know what's required statutorily because we didn't do a speed study specifically for that segment. We may need, we could add that on by a simple resolution at an upcoming meeting, certainly, but we'd have to go back and do a speed study for that as well.
Well, isn't that what you want, is the speed study, isn't it?
So anything that substantiates whether or not we indeed have that issue, so a speed study would be a good first start, even if we didn't change, because it would give us a better sense of whether or not we have regular egregious use of egregious speed.
I would recommend you do twice, once in the summer and once in the fall.
Well, I would suggest that as well, but I don't want to do staff's work for them.
No, but...
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Edberg, just to clarify, what I'm hearing as a request would be to take what we're proposing and extend the pilot study.
About another quarter mile or whatever that is.
Another segment, which I understand we'll need, and we could proceed with an additional speed study for that segment, and proceed with this resolution, and then come back and add on that for the, for the year-long study after we've done our due diligence statutorily. Is that correct?
Correct. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so because that is a, I'll have to double-check, I believe Orchard continues to be a collector east of McKnight. I will need to double-check that.
You sure it is?
So that being said, we would need to do that same engineering study, which takes a little bit of time to do, takes gathering that data, et cetera. So to simply add it to this resolution, I do not believe is feasible at this point. One thing I will note is that staff is continuing, we, each week we're doing, Rick laughs, but each week we are doing two, three, four, Rick and I meet, have met a whole bunch of folks. We've got, I'm guessing by the end of summer, we'll have, I don't know, 100 different speed counts throughout town. Some support citizens, I'll call it, seeing speeding issues. Others are very, you know, they're speeding my neighborhood and the speed counts are coming back at 20 miles an hour. So it's all over the board. But these new tubes or these new counters that we have are really allowing us to proof what residents are or aren't really seeing. So we will continue to do that regardless. The next step would be is that, you know, if we, even if we contain that study to just the roadways that we have in front of us tonight, in a year, next summer, we can say, we'll, after we post them, we're ready to start posting them tomorrow. We're gonna do a speed sign change out if this resolution passes tonight. We would, over the next, within a week, we will have that area reposted. As we watch, each month, we'll go back, we'll put the speed counters back out, we'll see what, if any, effect it has. And then, you know, council could extend a larger speed study, as I mentioned in the memo, is that we could actually go back and do a citywide speed reduction similar to Minneapolis and St. Paul, where we would post at our borders, you know, 25 miles an hour, or as posted. So that is an option without having to spend the time, money to do a speed study just for that additional segment of Orchard.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, thank you, I would welcome that. The two things that stick out to me, number one, summer is not necessarily the best time to take all of this data, that the, especially in this particular location, as close as it is to South Campus. Okay, now who, I don't know what it's gonna take when, when we move to North Campus, but just saying, summertime isn't the only time when we have these issues, and so be thoughtful about how, what data we collect. The second part is, my observation, listening, at least in my ward, I suspect we're not weird, is that issues of speed on our streets is one of the most persistent quality of life, infraction issues that we, that we run into. And I don't know that we have enough staff, enough police and public safety to devote to what our residents might think they want, but I think we need more than what we have. And I don't know what that answer is, but it's like, we've got too many folks driving too fast, and it annoys, bothers, or frightens their fellow citizens.
All right, so, yes.
The council, I was gonna save this to my kind of end of the evening notes, but I will, so if you recall, earlier this spring, we passed a policy for our radar speed signs that we put out, as well as the crosswalk, you know, indicators that we put up by, on Fourth Street near Cup and Cone. They seem to be working, people seem to be, as I drive through, they're seem to be paying more attention. So we do have those in place so far. We'll continue to look at other areas with those. But the speed signs, we've been really focusing on getting some initial data. I've counted, like I said, we've counted probably 20 different roadways in town so far. The one that initially sparked us was McKnight. That is actually, so we've got, it took a little bit of a process to get the county on board with us, kind of a process to allow us to put our equipment in there right away and do the counts and potentially put the radar speed signs up. We've kind of got that process figured out. We've got the speed counts for McKnight, and we counted kind of each major segment. And the one that actually happens to be the highest is the one near the South Campus. We actually were seeing average speeds of 45 miles an hour, a little bit over 45 miles an hour, where it's posted 30. So that is actually, we're working with county staff to get the proper, one call locates to be able to put those signs and signposts up within the next week here. And that'll provide us more feedback data as well to see what, you know, those signs will do for us. Not that we can, you know, we can't, I'm not gonna say that we can afford to go put those up on every road all around town. And if we do, even then, people just get immune to them as well. So the plan, again, as the policy stated, we'll move those around. We got another one, Ninth Street is another one that came out very high. So we'll kind of move those around as needed throughout the summer, winter. They can be left up during the wintertime. Some of the other county equipment cannot be left during the wintertime, because if we have a plow event and we have the tubes on the road, they get plowed up into the boulevard. So the radar speed signs, we can pick some areas that we can leave them up over the wintertime as well. So that'll provide us more year-round data. So that's just one more tool in our toolbox to be able to analyze what are their issues. And then Rick and I work very closely on the traffic control committee with the police department as well, and try to come up with solutions. We, you know, where we should have additional patrols, where we need to put the radar speed signs up, where we need to take speed counts. So we're actively, definitely, a lot more than we ever have been actively pursuing this issue.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ed, Engstrom.
The only thing I would recommend, we can try to watch Dell and Elm. If you're putting up these new signs, you might get cut through from Dell and Elm, and those speeds and our traffic might be higher now.
Oh, good to know. All right, well, to get back to this particular resolution, is there any more discussion on this particular piece? I've forgotten, do I even have a, do I have, no, nobody has made a motion.
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers?
Councilmembers?
Aye.
Edberg?
Edberg.
Engstrom?
Bean?
Bean? Aye.
Fine, thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to 9C, the City of Badness Heights proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Ms. Kane, is this one yours?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We did receive a request from the City of Badness Heights last week regarding a request for a comp plan amendment, which does require review and comment or acknowledgement of receipt and no comment from surrounding jurisdictions, of which the City of White Bear Lake is one of those. It is regarding a nine-acre site at the, located within the northeast quadrant of 35E and County Road E, which they are proposing to re-guide from industrial use to city center. That is part of kind of Badness Heights' effort to really foster a commercial core for their community. And Saturday Properties is a developer who's proposing to develop a five-story, 230-unit apartment building on that site. The southern portion of the site is zoned, or is guided for city center, which would allow it. And this is just to bring the entire parcel, which abuts 35E along its western, it's a very long, narrow property there that abuts 35E. And I just have some graphics here depicting the proposed site plan. We have not seen any building elevations, but in staff's estimation, you know, while it's not directly adjacent to the city limits, it is within the County Road E corridor, which has been the focus of conversation and desired for infusion of additional activity. And overall, we believe that the city will experience economic development benefit from the increase in diversity and housing stock, and give area employers an advantage in the competition for workforce in a very tight labor and tight housing market. And we believe there will be benefits to all of our city's businesses, whether along the County Road E corridor or within downtown as the regional kind of destination for cultural recreation and shopping and dining destinations. So staff does not believe there's any negative impact of this. We are recommending that the council adopt the resolution, which would then authorize us to provide no comment on the proposed comp plan amendment, as requested by the city.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Kane, what's the affordability level of the proposed new apartments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Edberg. That's a great question. I have not asked that question of the City of Badness Heights. I would be happy to get that additional information.
Can you do that, please?
Yeah. And I think we've got adequate time. If, I put it on tonight's agenda just so that their planning commission hearing will be on the same night that the city council next meets, on the 27th of this month, and I just wanted to, if possible, provide our feedback. If we can't get it to them by then, I don't think there would be any concern.
So I'm not interested in opposing or restricting our action. What Badness Heights chooses to do, I agree, it's kind of like, it's not our gig. I do want us, because it's, because the housing market crosses jurisdictional boundaries, I want us to be aware and be just taking note of who is being served by various kinds of housing options that are being made available at, by alternative, who is not being served. And I think that that informs our own housing study and our own housing issues. So I'm just looking for the information. If you would let us know, I'll be fine.
So would you be opposed to doing this resolution tonight?
I would, I would move the resolution.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, do we have any further discussion on this? Okay, well, if not, I guess I will call for a roll call vote.
Councilmembers?
Councilmembers?
Engstrom?
Engstrom?
Bean?
Bean?
Aye.
Edberg?
Edberg?
Walsh?
Walsh?
Thank you. Motion's pa, motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers?
Councilmembers?
Edberg?
Aye.
Bean?
Aye.
Walsh?
Walsh?
Engstrom?
Aye.
Just to know, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure that we should have had kids reading to dogs on the consent calendar. I think maybe we should have debated that issue.
Well, I want to know if Old Yeller is going to be one of those approved. We need to look at that curriculum very tightly.
Oh, you know, you know.
Kids reading to dogs.
Well, you know, you gotta try.
Cool, it's like, it's cool.
Try, it never hurts to try, right?
And the dogs will get nothing out of it, but the kids reading...
The dogs, the dogs, somebody have somebody paying attention to them, they'll be happy.
I wouldn't bet that.
All right, well, that moves that. We have nothing under discussion, but now we have communications from the city manager.
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, just briefly, I wanted just a shout out to all of the city staff that work on behalf of the council and our community for the great work done to support a weekend of fun and festivities. The first Market Fest, it's my understanding that it was the largest attendance yet that people can recall. I mean, which is, that's saying something on a really hot day. That tells you that people are ready to get out and celebrate together. So that was wonderful. And then, of course, the parade, while it was smaller, that was a result of just people not yet, the unit's not quite comfortable getting involved yet, and so, but it went really well, very smoothly. And then, of course, last but certainly not least, the fireworks went off. I can't say without a hitch, they went off without a hitch. Lot of work being done behind the scenes. We had gale force winds on the lake, and I was, you know, enjoying the great white north, or actually, it was really nice out.
Mr. Jubo was...
So we have others on staff, and our public works and our fire department, I just, you know, there's everyone. I can't, I'm not gonna call out names. We just have a tremendous and very dedicated staff. They were really excited to be a part of it, and they were determined to make it work. And I think it went really well.
It did?
Yeah, so I know, wanted to call that out. And of course, Market Fest continues through August 5th, so, and the city has a presence. We have a booth for both our housing task force combined with members from our welcoming and inclusive community initiative at the booth. So if you are at Market Fest, I would encourage council to stop by and say hello.
It's also Public Safety Week this week.
It is Public Safety Week. Thank you for the reminder.
What are we gonna do this week?
Very, yes.
What do they have planned? Are they gonna...
Lots of fun equipment. They'll be on...
The ladder truck will be up there and be displayed.
Oh, good. Thank you for that reminder.
That's good to know, yeah.
In fact, it's also a good reminder, because the ladder truck, there have been a few questions like, we want to see the ladder truck, you know. So I talked to Chief Peterson, and I, we did land on a date, I have it in my notes back in the office, but we thought what we would do is, in advance of a council meeting, we would have it set up so council could come.
Bucket rides?
Yeah, I have bucket rides, and we'll figure something fun.
Bucket rides.
Up the ladder.
Sorry, I'm not, I've rappelled off the tower on McKnight. I'm done, I'm not doing it.
I was above and beyond. It will be, of course, it'll be a touch of truck, but there'll be lots of families there. So we'll get it here for council to take a nice, up close and personal look at it at one of these upcoming meetings and just start that in advance. Thanks. So, thank you for the reminder, Rick. And then, also, as a reminder, the August 5th, which is the last week of Market Fest, is our environmental kind of week that we, or day highlight that we also, they take up a lot of Fourth Street during that day, and there's a lot of great...
And our environmental commission does a really good job on that, and they would welcome any of the council coming out.
Yes, it'd be wonderful.
And helping them with it, because they do a really good job on that.
They do. Okay, so with that, and then I think real quickly, a reminder that we do have a work session next Tuesday on the 20th. We'll be primarily, we'll be talking about the, you know, just an update on where we're at with the license bureau. So we have, so council knows, we have now reopened just walk-ins for standard licenses. The only thing now that requires appointments, then the only thing that's different from pre-COVID would be, there will, there's two things. One would be appointments required for those Real ID, and we're working through that, but right now, those are still required. And then, secondly, we do not yet have passports back, but we'll talk more about that at our, we have plans for that. So there's a variety of reasons, but it will be back. It's just not right away. So we'll talk about that next Thursday, and we'll be able to look at our revenues. We're feeling more encouraged than we were a year ago with a kind of our longer-term outlook. We can say, in preparation for that meeting, as you think about that, there, at this point, we don't have a real strong expectation to see the license bureau anytime soon being a profit department, as it had been historically. Our goal right now is to make it so that we break even. That's staff's goal. And we hope that as those fees increase, which at some point they will, for driver's licenses, and that really is the direct impact on our balance with revenues and expenditures, then at that point, we can perhaps start seeing some revenues. But right now, if we can break even, we're all very happy. And COVID was really hard on the license bureau, but they're bouncing back, and it's a great group of, right now, all women, but it's a great group of staff that are making that work, so.
Councilmember Edberg.
Thank you. Ms. Heinecker, so we recently received a communication from one of our state senators inquiring about capital campaigns and any uses that we might have. We had also identified to our, in our legislative package, a desire for legislative action to increase the fees permitted to be collected by units of government like us when we issue... Was there any progress on that? Was there any, no, really?
Yeah, thank you.
Hold accountable for that?
I know, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Edberg, I know that, I did receive calls back from the legislators after we had our meeting, and they indicated... the legislators after we had our meeting and they indicated that they, of course, they were, you know, they're in support of it. But I do know that, it was my understanding, the year prior, there were some changes in fee structures that didn't impact driver's licenses specifically, but there, they, none of them had a lot of, they weren't real optimistic about that happening this particular round. However, they recognized that it, and primarily because of all of the other work and things they needed to focus on this past year, which was an unusual year. So, off the get-go, I mean, right off the bat, when we talked, they said, yep, we get it. Just so you know, don't have a lot of, you know, don't have high expectations for this session, but, you know, perhaps next session. So, that I do, I would recommend that as a council, we, you know, meet earlier than we did last year and kind of reaffirm some of those discussions and meet with our representatives in the fall to have those discussions.
Yeah, I mean, I think they set the schedule to start in February. I mean, we ought to think about a December or even November. Even November, meeting with that.
Yep.
And really get the jump on it.
I agree.
And then really, really get legislation drafted and ready to introduce or work with them to get drafts of legislation introduced.
Yes.
Nobody's fault we were late. We just, that's the first time we've done that.
First time we did it.
And we got together fast and we got, we all kind of knew it was late.
Absolutely.
It was a good dry run. We had to just.
Absolutely. And it's also, Mayor, members of the council, I think it was also following that, getting feedback from the representatives in terms of, right, they did, I mean, they paid attention and they were asking questions. And so, I do think that as we kind of create that and put that as part of our, you know, we have these cycles, right? And put that into the cycle, I think we can start getting some traction, so.
And just to lower on the topic, I don't know if we, the Zoom was horrible. I mean, the Zoom format was terrible for that meeting because that, and I don't even know if a council meeting would be good for that meeting. Maybe it is a work session or something more. It should be a work session because we'll all be here, making a quorum, but if it could be conversational, I think it could be more effective.
I think so. And if we gave them enough lead time.
Maybe we can pull it off in a meeting, but we're kind of structured in our meetings, so it's difficult.
Easier if it was in a more casual setting because.
It would help us understand what some of the challenges might be too.
I remember being frustrated because of the Zoom. It was like, okay, one at a time. It was just like.
I will put that on, you know, we do have, we have between now and the end of the year, of course, we have those one work session meetings a month. And the way we've been calendaring our budget discussions, there may be some time in November to do that because we'll have already covered a lot and at least for part of the meeting.
November probably will work better than October.
Maybe work a tour of the public safety building or maybe that's probably the presentation, maybe they don't need to tour the old site just to see the new site.
Yep. Good, we'll work on that.
We need you to get that done before you leave.
Okay, I got my list. No, that's a great idea though. I think it could sit into the schedule too, so. Okay, and also, just, just so you have in your mind, we'll also talk a bit about Sports Center. At that work session, we have some things we just want to bring to you, kind of where some conversations are at with other groups and how things are going. It's all, none of it's, it's not whoa, it's all just positive conversation. And then, lastly, I know there's been, you know, interested parties about where are we at with South Shore and some of the amenities? And we at the staff level, of course, are engaged with that. If the council, it's like the matter of timing, at what point do you have those conversations? We will, we'd like to at that work session just touch on some of the things that we want to make, see which ones are the priorities of council. We have a pretty good idea what is and what we'll be pushing with the, I shouldn't say push with the county, but we need to negotiate some of these things with them and some of it will be at our cost, of course. So, we'll have a broader discussion about that also at the work session. So, that's next week. And then, lastly, a reminder that we have another work session, it's our monthly one, in August. And it's the Tuesday, I don't have the date, between the two, the second and fourth meeting, that will be our budget work session. So, we'll be talking about general fund and staff has been working hard to, you know, we continue to prepare for that meeting, but we'll start giving you some, well, we will be talking to you about what we presume the recommendation for a preliminary tax levy would be, 17th of August, because that meeting is the first meeting in September. And if we're not in the right direction, then we need to do some work before that meeting. So, the September meeting, so that will be.
Isn't there a, is there a Vento Trail meeting coming up?
Bruce Vento Trail meeting coming up soon? I don't have it on.
Tomorrow.
I don't have it on my calendar, but it could be and we'll make sure that you have that if there is. I don't.
I think it's coming like this week.
I believe it's tomorrow. There's one at noon and another one at 5:00. I just got the invite today.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I didn't get an invite, but I got somebody that.
Okay, well, we'll send that out tomorrow morning, first thing. I hadn't seen it, so, all right, thank you. That's all. Oh, just one more thing. And then at our next meeting, if anyone asks, I mean, staff has been working in cooperation with members of Lakelands who have been very strong advocates on behalf of the communities to help us get funding for all of this trail work. And so, our next one, of course, is 96, which is on the north side of the lake. So, we've been working with White Bear Township in cooperation with the county, Minda, to really figure out what's the best approach because there's really a lot of right-of-way issues there. So, we have some things that we'll work, we're working through for, in time for a discussion at our next meeting in terms of how council is comfortable with us proceeding as a staff with that. So, they'll be at the next meeting. So, that's it for me. I guess, I don't know if you folks have something you'd like to add? Paul, maybe starting with you?
Couple minor little items. One is we are coming to a very fast conclusion to our road rehab project. The, a couple more little areas to do final paving on and we should be done with the exception of the two parking lots, Lakewood Hills and Matoska Boat Launch. Be done after Labor Day, so we'll have kind of a couple-month gap here. Let the busy season get by us and then we'll do those parking lots when we see a little bit less activity in those areas. The other item I wanted to bring up is still working with Cara to finalize a ribbon cutting for the gazebo project. So, we had hoped to do it actually last Saturday initially, but thankfully we did not send out any notices. The, one of the components, the column covers came back and they did not match the samples and did not fit over the posts, so they had to get quickly reordered. They're hopefully will show up this week. The upper structure, if you've driven down Lake Avenue, is basically ready to go as soon as they can put those column covers on. It's craning the upper floor into place, doing some, you know, finish, little finish work and getting the landscaping complete. And then, mid-August is when we're looking at for a ribbon cutting. We'll finalize that with City Manager Heinecker and we will get those notices out. So, that's coming up very quickly for us. So, that's all I have tonight.
And with that, it's turned over to me, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, I just have a quick report. As you know, last year, the city utilized a lot of our CARES relief funding to create programs. And I just, we just learned yesterday that ongoing, you know, the SBA, the Small Business Administration, had created a restaurant relief program. And I'm happy to report that we were, six restaurants did receive funding, nearly a million dollars that were distributed to our local restaurants through the federal funds program that was available. And that was a competitive grant that required them to apply. So, that's just good news to let you all know that there are federal funds coming in too. And as far as I know, I don't think we've lost a restaurant.
Uh-uh.
And that's pretty remarkable, given what they went through over the last 16 months or something. And it, it just has to be acknowledged, the work that the EDC, the Bain Street, that Regrow White Bear Lake all had really positive effects on that.